I'd like to call the regular city council meeting of October 25th, 2022. To order with roll call, please.
Jerome.
Here.
Houseman.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Stamen.
Here.
Miller.
Here. The invocation, would you please surprise for the invocation given by Pastor Aaron Semenac of Navigation Church and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Jeremiah, Father, we just thank you for your grace and your mercy in our personal lives, but God, the mercy and grace you bestow upon the beautiful city of Collinsville, the leadership of this city, elected officials, all those that serve in all our areas of the city, God, we just know that you have been a hand of provision upon this city and you've held us, and God, we ask once again that you would continue to hold us in the days, decades, and days ahead. Father, we just thank you for your leadership that speaks to the hearts and the minds of even everybody represented on this council and everybody who is passionate about the city of Collinsville. We ask that our, our words would be reflective of your heart, that our actions would be reflection of your deeds, and that, God, in all things, we would bring the glory. But, God, we just specifically ask for this council session that you would be present, that your wisdom would prevail, and that Collinsville's best days are still ahead with you at the center. We once again thank you for your grace and your mercy, your provision and your love. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is business prior to public input. Item one, public hearing regarding the vacating of right-of-way properties from the city of Collinsville to Black Fridays LLC to the Victor A. Pacewick Trust.
I'd like to open the public hearing and hear the staff report, please, from Mr. Travis Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Black Fridays LLC and the Victor A. Pacewick Trust are requesting the vacation of rights of way near their respective properties. And you can see here, I've got the property called out to be vacated, and you can see on the map, Black Fridays LLC is better known as Black Friday Liquidators, and the Victor A. Pacewick Trust owns property up off of Crandall Street. They put in this request jointly as they were working out the right-of-way vacation plat together. The vacated right-of-way includes unimproved railroad avenue right-of-way. This is an avenue that has, that was dedicated for a road but never developed, and also a portion of Crandall Street that was dedicated but also unimproved. The city with this will retain a 20-foot utility easement along the right-of-way adjacent to Black Friday Liquidators, and I've got some better aerials for us to look at here. So the red portion of the right-of-way that you can see here, this is Railroad Avenue, will be dedicated to Black Fridays, and then this blue portion will be dedicated to the Victor A. Pacewick Trust. Side note, you'll note these black lines on this map are parcel lines. The city prior to this right-of-way request has been working with the Victor A. Pacewick Trust to combine these properties so we don't create any illegal lots that don't have right-of-way frontage. So this is now, it's been, it's unrecorded as of this evening, but we do have a consolidation plat signed and ready to go for this parcel here, which will be entirely owned by the Victor A. Pacewick Trust. This is a rendering of our 20-foot wide utility easement, which we're retaining along the portion of Railroad Avenue right-of-way. And for some historical context, it's maybe a little bit difficult to see, but the, this is a image of an old linen plat map from the county, and you can see on this plat map, the Railroad Avenue right-of-way, which was originally platted to go all the way down and touch Clinton Street, which intersects with 157. The old Brooks facility, once they started incurring some expansions and the use began to evolve, the railroad right-of-way for the Brooks building was vacated, and so the Brooks building started to occupy areas that were previously Railroad Avenue right-of-way. So really, this is kind of a cleanup because we have right-of-way that immediately abuts the current Black Fridays facilities, and they are requesting it to be vacated up to the portion to which it becomes usable for other, other property owners. So they're requesting the entirety of this parcel to be going to Black Fridays, and then this parcel will go to Victor A. Pacewick. And you can see with this plat that shows the consolidated Pacewick property. Pursuant to previous conversations with the council, I would like to touch a little bit on staff's thoughts moving forward with right-of-way vacations. We will be starting discussions and develop the policy on the cost of land and, and how we negotiate transfers of right-of-way and transfers of property. This right-of-way dedication precedes those conversations. We've been working on this for a matter of months, so this is not being proposed with any dollar exchange, dollars exchanged. So we are requesting approval and proposing approval of this right-of-way vacation, again, with no, no costs to the applicant, and the Public Works Department, the Community Development Department, and legal have all reviewed this and recommend approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions of Mr. Taylor?
Just one clarification, on its own, it has no commercial value, correct?
Yeah. As it's, as it's perceived, there's very little commercial value for, at most, this property. Its only access would be to a small portion of Railroad Avenue to the north. So the only value it currently has is probably to Black Fridays.
Thank you.
Do we know if there's any utilities underneath there? I know we've gone into a couple situations lately where there's a sewer line underneath someone's swimming pool.
Absolutely. So we require with vacation plaits now and moving forward, at least since I've been here and since Mr. Turner's been here, we've been making sure that they verify all utilities have been vacated or at least show them in an easement. This utility easement that's shown here is for future use. The city decided to maintain that easement in case we have a need in the future.
Thanks.
How far down does Reed?
Reed.
Coming down the hill.
Good question. I, I'm nodding, I don't think I have a blow-up that shows.
No, I think it's right there.
This is Clint. I apologize, still.
Okay, I can see you from there.
So are those connected, those, the Pacewicks and Black Friday? Or this two separate, these are two separate things?
Two separate parcels, they decided to make the request jointly. So the Pacewicks are actually up on a, kind of a hill, and then the, the Black Fridays actually has a, a light that shines up on the, the ketchup bottle that's located on the Pacewick property.
Is there any public input on this conversation? Anyone from the audience have any comment? Being done, I would adjourn the public hearing and the next item.
Item two, ordinance vacating right-of-way properties from the city of Collinsville to Black Fridays LLC and to the Victor A. Pacewick Trust.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So per state statute, we are required to conduct the public hearing, which we have just satisfied, and following that public hearing, we will be entertaining an ordinance vacating the right-of-way and not to belabor any, any extra details that we've already discussed, but staff is recommending approval of this vacation.
Questions? Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Jerome, seconded by?
What's seconded?
Councilman Green. Roll call, please.
Jerome.
Yes.
Houseman.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Stamen.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Item three, ordinance rezoning real estate owned by committee to elect J.C. Hoffman, located at 210 and 212 East Main Street, from B2 Limited Commercial District to UCD Uptown Collinsville District.
The overview will be given by Director Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council again. The next item on your agenda is a request by the city of Collinsville to rezone 210 and 212 East Main Street to Uptown Collinsville District. This shouldn't be a foreign concept, as we've tackled this issue many times, but with the property owner currently seeking to market the property, the city is looking to pursue the rezoning of this property to UCD to make it more marketable. You may see this in the future as well, this, myself will be making a pitch that the city actively pursue properties that are uptown and available for sale and to market, and we proact, can proactively pursue the Uptown Collinsville District rezoning. And so this is the first of many that I think we'll start seeing over this next year, and we'll start partnering up with some of these property owners. I think it takes a step away from the development process, and it would allow any new user for this property to just segue right in and start using as long as it's allowed within the Uptown Collinsville District, and of course, they meet occupancy. So with that, I'll just kind of briefly touch on the property. 210 and 212 is immediately adjacent to Scissors Shack on East Main Street. It is just west of the John Locas Photography, and then further down, you have the vacuum shop and the, sorry, Code Three Spices, and the city is looking to rezone both of these parcels, and you can see here in this, in this picture, it is the vinyl-sided facade there. So the Committee to Elect J.C. Hoffman is currently marketing that property for sale, and this would really kind of grease the wheels here to get us, grease, to get us moving forward with that sale. It's currently zoned B2 as are most of our, most properties in our uptown, and we will rezone this Uptown Collinsville District, which is recommended by our zoning code, supported by our Uptown Master Plan and the comprehensive plan. The property currently maintains a lower floor, first floor, that is mostly office space built out right now, a second floor that can be used as residential, and the, which is supported in the Uptown Collinsville District and, you know, preferred, and then it also has a basement. City staff and the community and the Planning Commission have reviewed this request. Planning Commission recommends approval, and staff are recommending approval as it meets all the criteria for zoning change. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, comments?
No question. I'll state the obvious, as I've said many times, I'm a big believer in bringing as many properties into the UCD. It allows the businesses to move in more quickly, and it allows the unique nature of uptown, it gives us greater latitude as we, we allow businesses in, so I do like the idea of pursuing more UCDs for all those properties. So I like, I think that's a great, great thing, and so I think this fits in exactly with where we're going with uptown.
At some fut, on that point, you know, at some future meeting, maybe I'd like to see what, the amount of properties are still B2 versus UCD, just kind of break down.
Absolutely. We're, we've been making a dent over the recent years for sure, but there's still quite a number, you know, only happens when there's a change of use uptown, and we've got some properties that have remained use, the same use they had been for quite some time, so, yep, absolutely.
Anyone else? Being done, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Houseman, seconded by Councilman Stamen. Roll call, please.
Jerome.
Yes.
Houseman.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Stamen.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is speakers from the floor.
Speakers may address the council under terms of ordinance number 4765. Time is limited to four minutes per speaker. Please refer to the last page of the agenda for specific rules governing input. Anyone from the north side of the room? From the north side of the room?
Test. Good evening. Kevin Wrigley, resident of Collinsville. I'm here to ask you guys, two weeks here before the vote on home rule, to please bring some transparency to the issue of what will happen if home rule is eliminated. In councilmen's, Councilman Green's presentation on home rule last week, the pro-home rule presentation, she said the city has not made an official statement, as they don't want to put out official, an official statement that would scare the employees. I would submit to you that that proposition is doing the opposite. It is actually scaring the employees, because apparently they are out there telling the public that they are going to lose their jobs if we don't keep home rule. So I've studied other communities that have gone through the home rule debate, and the councils have brought the public into the process and actually had workshops and shown what, if anything, could be cut, or what revenues would be replaced by things like a non-home rule sales tax, which has still yet to be discussed by the council. I please ask that you guys would consider doing that. Also, I'm aware that later on in the meeting, I guess you guys are looking to buy more real estate on Main Street, I'm told, the old driving school. So if we're in these dire straits where we're concerned about our funding, but we continuously keep buying more real estate, I'm just curious what the rationale is for another purchase of another building on Main Street. If you guys can talk about that when that issue comes up, please. One last thing with regard to real estate taxes. I know it has been said many, many times by the councilmen that we have the second lowest property tax in the region. It fails to state that O'Fallon is lower than ours, as well as Shiloh. But what also is, been failed to mention is the tax levy, which is the actual amount that is taken out of the residents' pocket via the real estate taxes. This amount has gone up every year for the last five years, and it is up now 34% since 2017. The rationale for the home rule is that we're diversifying revenue, therefore we can charge you less property taxes. But the reality is, you guys have not done that. Other communities have done that. From the data that I've been able to, to research so far, O'Fallon has done that. They have reduced their property tax levy. Councilman Stamen would probably be aware of this, since he worked for them for so long. Glen Carbon is in the same boat, they've also reduced their tax levy. So I'm just asking for some transparency from you guys. Please, help the citizens out, there's a lot of confusion out there, and you guys being quiet and mum about it really just perpetuates that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the north side of the room? From the south side?
Phil Estraskis. It's wonderful that we live in a country that we can speak our peace without being attacked. One thing that I've tried to promote from years and years ago is to increase this board size. At this point now, three people decide the fate of 25,000 people. If it involves a raise in taxes, TIF funds, anything the city spends, I think this thing should be adopted for more people to have a comment on it. We, one council and mayor is five. We have the highest per capita, least representation of any community on this side of the river. I just don't think that's right. Mr. Jerome had said at a previous council meeting that he favored more mines would probably be better for the community. Nothing has ever been done. I just think you ought to consider more people on this council, because three people should not dictate for 25,000. I guess I have to comment again, it's been brought up many times at the senior center that the people fighting this thing are the Realtors and landlords. I don't believe it's that at all, but I can see the Realtor's point. Of all the other communities that they've been spending money in, Carbondale, et cetera, and six other communities with home rule, they've stretched their tax from 1% to 3.5%. It is abused. Three people can do just like what we did, not a card. Have excess spending, spend the money, and we're, the residents of Collinsville are indebted to this thing until 2030. I don't think that's right. Somewhere along the line, the residents have to have a voice. I'd like to reiterate what Kevin Wrigley said. O'Fallon's taxes includes their library board, which puts them ahead of us, and I know with all the smart people up here, we could figure it out that they've got a lower tax rate for real estate than we do, and I think this should be addressed. Maybe you've got an answer, maybe somebody lied, Kevin, or myself, or anybody else that looked this up. Collinsville, get ready for a new tax. This is from the year 2012. Residents of council should prepare to pay more sales tax for shopping at the local Walmart and Home Depot. The council will soon be proposing an additional 1% sales tax for Walmart and 1.5% for the Home Depot. Sales taxes for this area are already charging, this is for the food and beverage tax, 10.01%. Under current taxing, there are not enough funds with all the financial to pay the bond debt for Collinsville Crossing. This is how we increase debt.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the south side of the room? Being done?
Comments and announcements from the mayor?
This coming weekend, the Uptown Merchants Association is having their Fall Fest Saturday. There's going to be a lot of kids that are walking around in costumes, and there's a costume contest at the Miners Theater. I think that kicks off at 11 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. I think you have to register prior to 10:30. A lot of good things going on uptown with the Fall Fest. With trick-or-treating, please be, be aware of children walking on the streets after dark with masks on, not being attentive enough about traffic and so forth. Please be cautious out there. We want all of our children to get home safely after they enjoy their trick-or-treating. So Fall Fest this weekend, and then trick-or-treating, I believe it's on the 30th? I'm not sure. When is trick-or-treating?
The 31st.
What day?
The 31st.
31st. That's all I have.
Comments and announcements from council members?
Council?
Donnie, you want me to go? You want me to go? Me? All right. I guess I want to comment on, Mr. Wrigley was saying that we're being quiet, we're being mum. We're not, we're just not talking about it as much here, primarily because we're told that there are parameters upon which we can talk about home rule. Now, since he said that, though, I do want to set the facts straight. We have been transparent. We've had meetings talking about the budget, we've had meetings talking about the sales tax, where the sales tax are coming from. We've had our, our chief financial officer talk about the debt, talk about all those types of things. We've tried to be as open and factual, giving you empirical data of what's at issue here. And so we do want to talk about what is at issue. We've had this sales tax that's been growing since 2005. It's currently up to 7 million that we're getting from it that's supplementing the property tax. While communities around us have had to raise their property tax, we haven't. We've used sales tax to supplement. It's simple economics. If you can bring in a diversified form, and as you said, diversify the income stream, which is what we've done with the sales tax, that's what we're talking about with, with home rule. In 2005, if you think about what was going on in the city, you can see why they were doing what they were doing. We had Gateway that was operating, we had Collinsville Crossing that was going on, we had a lot of people coming in from outside our community, so historically, that's what they were looking to do. They wanted to take advantage of all these people that were coming into our community, using our services, and draw from that sales tax to help run the government, help fund part of it anyway, instead of having the property taxes foot all of it. But when they went to the state and said, hey, can we take more of this sales tax since we've increased our tax base, the statute said, no, 1%. The way around it, home rule. With home rule, you could increase to another percent. So that's why they did it. There's no power grab here, it was a diversification of income stream, that's why they created home rule in 2005. And so that's really what's going on here, that sales tax has continued to increase since, since that, that origination in 2005. So what we're trying to do here with home rule is keep it, because otherwise, we're 7 million down with our budget. It's got to come from somewhere. It's not just going to magically appear somewhere, and if you're talking about taking a budget from 36 million to 29 million, we have fixed costs. There's going to be a, a lot of impact to this, to personnel, to capital improvement, to things like parks, all of the things that this council has been working on and striving to, to move this city forward, all the things that we see as great things going on with our community, from our Parks Department to Gateway getting, taking off, to our streets and sidewalks finally being improved, to even our fire trucks and getting, we were able to get a fire truck replaced that was 28 years old. That's what this sales tax is intended to do, was to supplement it. So what the council has been trying to do is, instead of throwing it back on the property tax owners, we've been trying to increase that sales tax base. Because if you increase the sales tax, well, that funds more for the city at no cost to the citizens. That's the best part of all of this, is home rule allows us to have that sales tax without having any impact to the property owners. That's what it's all about. That's what home rule, the main reason why we're saying we need to keep it, because there's $7 million that's just going to fall off of our budget. Now, you asked whether we're going to start naming who we're going to fire or who we're going to lay off if we lose home rule? Hell, no. I'm not going to tell a firefighter or a policeman, you know, if we lose home rule, you're out. What's that firefighter or policeman going to do? They're going to look for another job. No way would I do that. That doesn't make sense. We do know the impact, we do know it's going to be disastrous here, $7 million. Think about how many employees that would be. Think about how many capital improvement projects we've got in the works. 157, St. Louis Road, our Parks Department that are finally starting to look nice. All of that comes to a screeching halt. That's why we're saying we don't want to lose this. That's why we're saying, and why we've been fighting so vehemently for this. That's all I have.
Thank you. Please.
Yep. I, I just want to make a couple comments about home rule as well. You know, I, I really struggle with, and I can't understand why one group opposing home rule in multiple Illinois cities is, is looking to, for so much detriment to residents, to, to small, to families with, you know, small families, to seniors, to businesses. I don't get it. I know it's likely agenda-driven, but for the life of me, I can't pinpoint what it was, what, what it is, but given some of the mistrue- But given some of the mistruths and some of these hideous mailers that have come out, it must be a doozy, I can tell you that. I mean, there's also been comments made here and online that are mere diversions and have absolutely nothing to do with home rule. They range from where does one live, the size of the council, the construct of the council, bureaucracy. And I will say that the city staff and this council, particularly Councilman Stamen, has led an effort here to look at those ordinances in this city to make it easier for residents and businesses to do business here. And that's been something that's been going on since, shoot, since I've been on the Planning Commission. And it's the right thing to do, is to have a systematic approach, to look at your ordinances and find out what fits, what needs to be amended, what needs to be adjusted, and that's what's happened quite a bit here in the past couple, two or three years. I think, you know, the other thing that completely baffles me is why one group whose business hinges upon residents in these towns is doing so much to alienate their future customers. That I don't get. And I really applaud some of the local Realtors who have voiced their opposition against the Realtors Association's stance, and believe that home rule is good for the city of Collinsville. And let's talk about council size. So I can't speak to some of the other cities, but I can speak to, like, the township in Madison County. For here in Collinsville, we have, for every 5,000 people, there's a council person, okay, including the mayor. So one for every 5,000. And the township, it's one for every 7,100. And in Madison County, there's one board member for every 91, 9,100 residents. So I'll just leave it at that. That's all my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Please.
So, Kevin, I don't quite know where you've been for the last seven or eight years while I've been serving on the council or involved in this community, but I certainly haven't seen you around until this thing, home rule, has surfaced. Couple of the things that you mentioned up here tonight is lack of transparency, and I take a bit of issue with that, because as I sat where you are from 2014 until I ran for City Council in 2017, there is a vast difference in what we would call transparency. When I sat where you were, there was vast confusion and very little transparency as to what was going on in this community, which is exactly what led me to do what I do today. Back then, I had heard nothing but, you can't sell your home in this community because of the Council School District. Nobody wants to live in this community. The property values are terrible in this community, and I wanted to understand why. So I got involved and started understanding why. And what I understood, when I started to understand why, I knew that I wanted to be a part of the solution and not a part of the problem. So what did I do? I got involved in events to help bridge the communication between the real estate organization, between the school district, between the city, between businesses. And I continue to be involved, and I'm not tooting my horn here. What I'm saying is, I don't think you have a clue about the lack of transparency that used to be in this city that no longer happens. I never hear anymore that people don't want to move to Collinsville. I never hear that anymore. I rarely hear anything negative about our school district. Today, our school district and our city and our chamber all work together to do amazing things in this community. One of those coming up is November 10th, the Council Community Awards, where the chamber, the city, and the school district work together to recognize people in this community who are doing good. So I do take issue with the fact that you are calling us out on lack of transparency when I sat in your meeting the day after ours, and you had slide after slide after slide of data with no context. You could not explain the debt to the people that you presented to. You had a slide of all the years of debt, but you got, when asked, when those people that you were presenting to asked the question, you could not answer them. You looked to me to answer. You looked to me to answer for a decade before I start, before I even got involved. Obviously, I couldn't answer that, but if you're gonna put that information out there, you should have had an answer. The day before, we did have an answer. We had an answer on where our debt is. We laid it out. We laid it out here, we laid it out there. We have not created the confusion in this community, Mr. Wrigley. Your blasphemous and lack of fact mailers that you have sent out week after week have been what's caused confusion and fear in this community. As far as those walking that are part of the fire union, no one's forcing them. These are grown men. These are grown men who love this community and are doing that because they understand the risk of losing home rule, not only for the lives, their livelihood and their employment here, and the employment of police and all other forms of employment, but they understand that it stops progress. When this council cannot make decisions based on what is best for this community, and we have to go through this process right here for every little thing that we want done, and some of those things can't even be put through this process. So, Mr. Wrigley, be very careful when you're accusing us of lack of transparency, because I believe you're the pot calling the kettle black.
Thank you. No.
Yeah, I, like everyone else, I think we need to know the importance of the vote on November 8th. And as part of a citizens committee, we've tried to educate the public, and I think the city staff has done an excellent job at that. Counter, not countering, but putting out facts of what we're doing here financially and all that. And unfortunately, the opposition hasn't done that. They've thrown figures out, Councilman Green just mentioned some of the stuff that was talked about last week. Throw it out there and see what sticks. And unfortunately, some people are listening to that. I talked to a businessman the other day, and he told me that, he said, since the city's got to be home rule, said, they've told me that they've, all this property they've bought, they bought that Arlington Green golf course down there, you know? And I had a hard time convincing the guy that it's got nothing to do with council. Well, that was card. It's got nothing to do with council. So that's the kind of information that's getting thrown out there, and lies, and we can't chase those lies. All we can do is give the facts of what's happening in the city. So, we're trying to keep up and make sure the residents are informed, and I think I've said that from the very start, and I've said it in both my presentations. We're trying to give you facts, and everything that we say, you can back that up by going to the city and asking the city, and looking on the website, going to the budget, or whatever it takes. The opposition is a special interest group of Realtors based in Springfield, and also the Granite, the Greater Gateway Board. They are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars statewide against home rule. Tens of thousands just in this community. We're a local, we're a local board of grassroots, board of citizens. We can't match those dollars. We can't match the number of mailers you're getting flooded with, the phone calls, the texts, the flyers with no, nobody, there's nothing on saying where it's coming from except the website. We can't match it. So all we can do is do the best we can, and we know that there's other groups that are involved in that Realtors Group. The Landlords Association is one of those groups. The Granite, the Greater Gateway Board, there's 12 members in that board, two of them live in the city of Collinsville. A lot of them are from, some from Godfrey, some from Marion. A lot of them operate their Realtor business out of the city. So, all I want the citizens to know is get your facts, make sure the information you're hearing is factual. Watch where you're getting it. When you get that next mailer and it says Greater Gateway Realtors Association, Glenn Carvin, is that what you want to help you make a decision for what's better for the residents of Collinsville? This is the vote that only the residents and council can vote for. And make sure that information you're getting is correct. A lot of things they've thrown out there, issues that have nothing to do with home rule, and all they're doing, trying to is confuse the issue. So, anyway, my point being, get your facts right, make sure you're getting the right information, do a little homework, dig into it, and find out the motives of the opposition. And I think that will tell you the story, that will tell you where that opposition comes from. That's all I have.
I can't tell you how much this has upset the council. I think it's very evident from what the council members have said, that, you know, they take it very strongly, and so do I, that they, people are saying that we're not doing our job. We were elected by the people of this community, year after year after year, election after election, to be the voice of the people and do the job. I have served on this council since 2005. Prior to that, there wasn't home rule. We have changed the way we've done things through city managers that have been through and here on, directing the council and the way we do things. But only in the last 10 years have we really taken the home rule function to saving property tax dollars and manipulating that into a better community. If you're as old as I am, and you lived in the city in 2005, and compare the city today with what we had in 2005, and you think it was better then than it is now, you didn't live here in 2005, I don't think, because we're so much better today than we were. We drove, I was on the fire department and prior to that, and we drove 30-year-old fire trucks to fires. One didn't even have a gas gauge in it. I was driving down Clay Street one time, and the truck ran out of fuel. We didn't know that it didn't have fuel in it. People on shift before that didn't fill it up. We've got better fire equipment, we've got better people manning that fire equipment, we've got police officers, we're doing great things. Our staff in City Hall are getting grants and all different types of things, because we didn't have those people back then. We didn't have the knowledge to do the things that we're doing today. But yet, someone sitting in an office someplace thinks that they know more than what the people working in City Hall do as far as how to run a municipality. It's not easy. It's not easy. And it's not easy to keep 25,000 people happy. Unfortunately, there's gonna be some people that are disgruntled. All we can do is what's best for the masses. And I commend the council. Did you? Go ahead.
May I add something to that, Mayor? One of my points, and I probably didn't make it very clear about asking where they've been for the last seven years while I've been serving, I've never had him sit at a city council meeting, or, you know, some people come intermittently, and my point is, is they come intermittently whenever it's a topic that goes against what they think. Otherwise, they're not here doing the hard work, day in and day out, that this council is. And to your point about how hard this topic has been, along with other topics over the last, for me, seven years, but this topic is hard on the council, but from my perspective, it's not because I'm being criticized. That comes with the territory. I know, when I go to sleep at night, that I have done the best that I can in this role. I know how hard I work, and I know how hard each and every one of us sitting up here works, and where our heart and best interest is, and it really lies with the residents. And so, the part that makes it so hard for me, and I would guess for the rest of the council, is that we understand what this means if we lose home rule for the residents and for the future progress for this city. And so, I think that's where this is hard on us, and where, it's not just hard, it's just hard to go through, to think of the risk, and, you know, us not claiming or stating who is going to be laid off. I believe that our voters, the people that vote in this community, are way smarter than those mailers, and they see the value in home rule. And that on November 8th, we're gonna be fine. I truly believe that. And so, to me, there's no point in stating which firefighters, or which administration, or which, whatever department, because it'll be every department is going to be cut. There's no point in saying that, because I believe we're gonna be fine.
I totally agree with you, but I think you have to look back and see how far we've come.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You know, we, we've made great strides in building a community, having the best, up-to-date, most modern water treatment plant in southern Illinois. Our sewer plant is top-notch in the country. Our firefighters and our police officers, our police department is accredited nationally. Our firefighters are doing the things that a lot of big-city departments do. Our, we're just on the brink of breaking over and doing even greater things.
Yes.
And this is just a pebble in the road that we have to get through, and believe me, nobody looks at this. I've had several council members on the council with me as a mayor, and this group up here right now is probably the most intense, hardest-working, most dedicated people that really care about the community. That's why we fill out a petition, and that's why we get the signatures, and that's why we run for office, because it's not for a measly salary, it's because we love the community. And the staff that we have, that we hand-pick the staff to fit with the ideals and the ideas that this council brings to them, and then they work out the details. So, you know, I concur with everything that all four councilmen said, and I appreciate them greatly, and I appreciate their comments, and I appreciate the comments from the public as well. We're not perfect. We don't do everything right all the time, but we're still there trying to do the best we can and make this city, we are not the city, we are the caretakers of the city. The residents are the city, and we're here for them. And, you know, it's, it's really interesting when we'll go through almost a year of council meetings, and there's not one person gets up to that podium and says anything negative about what's going on in the city. But one thing, when we lose the 25,000 population on a vote during COVID where people didn't fill out their paperwork, and the state says we dropped below 25,000 people, we have to fight for our lives to keep the home rule status that we've had for 17 and a half, 18 years. It's beyond me, but, but anyway, that's what it is. And I'd like to thank the council for making their comments that they have this evening, and I stand behind each and every one of them. That's all I have. Get off my soapbox here. Next item.
Comments and announcements from city staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council asked Jamie Wayne to come up, and we'll talk a little bit about the state of Gateway Convention Center. To kind of set the context a little bit, if you all remember back to 2017, we did a strategic plan and an economic impact analysis. we did a strategic plan and an economic impact analysis. Johnson Consulting did that at Gateway Center. That really, I think, one of the most impactful components of that was that the the center was estimated to have an annual impact of thirty-six million dollars, which the decision was made based on, as we all know, the relationship to that point and the statutes that governed how the convention center was ran was the limitation on revenue generation and that this was not going to be a successful endeavor unless the city were able to step in and basically take over ownership and management. So we did that in May of two thousand and eighteen, and I want everybody to remember, we didn't buy the Gateway Center. We didn't pay any money for the Gateway Center, it was transferred to us, so there were no acquisition costs. We've made several performance improvements through time. One of the first actions we did was renovate the conference center wing, and that was a capital bill grant that was pending for the Gateway Center that they were not able to use because they couldn't put up the matching funds. So we were able to renovate that that area of the building. And we also took the concessions and catering from really a liability to an asset, and that's both in the quality and the cost. And really what the game changer was there was bringing that revenue stream in-house. And we'll talk a little bit about that and what's what that's looked like. And then let's talk about, you know, how fun it is taking over in eighteen and having a year in nineteen and then having twenty come to a screeching halt because of COVID with no business. And then I call it reinvention. We had several layoffs along with a leadership change, as you see Jamie standing here now and leading us through. She brought us through that period. We started with a mass vaccination clinic with Madison County Health Department, which turned into a very critical revenue stream for us from the state in moving that forward. And it also provided a safe environment where you see I put dance competitions, and it seems like a a minor thing as Jamie smiles at me, but they really redefine what the business model looked like at Gateway. And you'll see as we move forward, that's one of our strongest performing opportunities is those dance competitions. And a lot of that comes to the fact of what we allow in in catering now, that we, you know, we're not strict on prohibiting outside food, and we have, you know, food there for people to visit, to to purchase. And it's been great. And so we'll talk about that here for a minute. And I think, you know, I'd like to turn it over to Jamie and talk a little bit about what's our current state of business in two thousand and twenty-two. And I'll give you a hint, it's really good.
Okay.
Jamie.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I worked with finance, and we've reviewed the Gateway Center overall financial performance. And this is at the end of quarter three, so as of September thirtieth. Gateway Convention Center overall revenues was one million, five hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents, with the expenses of one million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents, with that being a net loss of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and sixteen cents, which is one point eight percent of our expenses. That is to say, that is, Gateway Center is within one point eight percent of breaking even, which is unbelievable and unheard of. In convention centers, the standard industry subsidy amount is between ten and fifteen percent. So if we were to take that net loss of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and sixteen cents, that's equivalent to a two-point-five-nine percent subsidy from that total of the hotel motel taxes that's been collected to date, which is a big number of one million, one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. We're very optimistic. The Gateway Center will even break even. We haven't even entered the fourth quarter, and it's a strong quarter for us. So based off of our bookings and revenue projections, we believe we will break even in two thousand and twenty-two.
I'm just going to jump in real quick, because I want to talk a little bit about that subsidy comment. And that is, the the practice for these facilities is hotel motel tax revenues are used to offset the subsidization. And again, like Jamie said, the standard is ten to fifteen percent, many facilities operate at twenty percent. So to think that the all of the revenues generated by the facility are within one point eight percent of a match is a very, very strong position. And again, to say again, that based on our projections and the bookings through the end of the year, they're looking to break even and even potentially run a profit. But, you know, some of those events, you could have impacts happen to that that won't happen. But this is where we're at now, being so close. You know, we've talked about in twenty-one, how when we started out with the vaccination clinics, that we ran five months, I believe, where we actually did run a profit with the revenues over the expenses. And so getting to this point, I think, is, you know, it's also a giant credit to the leadership that Jamie's brought and to all the staff for all the hard work they've done down there, because it's a great, it's a great group, and it's a very, very busy facility right now.
Very hardworking and creative team. The highlights here that I just wanted to call out, what makes a difference for two thousand and twenty-two, there's a lot of things that factor in, but two of the biggest is the increase in the sporting events, athletic events. They've increased by thirty percent. In nineteen, it was eight. In two thousand and twenty-one, it was twen- uh, sixteen athletic events, and this year it's twenty. So it just, it's grown and maximized. We also have a return of conventions, and I've listed some of those here. Archon Science Fiction Convention, Illinois Realtors Association Convention, Cyberspace, which is a military technology convention. Living the Word did a ten-city tour, and we were the first stop on that tour. And there was a national train show convention. All of these events, sporting events and conventions are multi-day, and they bring in the most revenue and the most economic impact. So they are our highest priority, and that's exciting to have that growth in those areas. And I also did a direct economic impact calculation of that Archon Science Fiction Convention. And I calculated that's seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of direct economic impact when you count the number of days, the number of people, and how many hotel stays and and meals. So then moving forward, we're going to dive deeper into that catering and concessions department. The revenues for the catering department are three hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents, with the expenses at two hundred, thirty-seven thousand, ninety-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. That's a net profit of seventy-two thousand, two hundred, thirty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. This is thirty point five percent of the expenses. This catering and concessions, we took over completely in February of two thousand and twenty-one when we ended the previous contract we had with an exclusive catering company. This allows us to increase the quality and lower the costs. And we removed the middleman commission paid to the contracted caterer, which was, at that time, we paid a, we received a commission of seventeen point five percent. But we currently have a preferred catering program with a thirteen percent commission. So we've lowered that commission, and we're still doing this good. We created a standalone department to handle the catering at Gateway Convention Center and the concessions for all the city facilities, so that's to include the sports complex and the aqua park. The department started with only one full-time employee and eleven part-time, and now has grown to three full-time and thirty-eight part-time. And some of the highlights and just things to note about the catering department, the concessions in the bar services are exclusively done through our in-house catering team. The catering has grown from at the beginning coffee services with with pastries, break services, to continental breakfast, and then to lunch and dinners for small groups of two hundred people or less. The outside catering is permitted still in the building, but with stipulations. And we have developed a catering, preferred catering program. And to year-to-date, that is bringing us thirty-four thousand, thirteen dollars and ninety-five cents. So what's next and what's coming next, looking ahead? We we have an exciting November and December ahead of us, so I've just called out some of those things. We have two athletic events. One is Celebration Talent Competition and MCDH Cheer and Dance Competition. Both of those are new athletic events in the month of November. The Rotary District sixty-four sixty is a convention we're excited to host. It's new to our building in November. And we have C Three, the Community Awards Event, also November tenth. And moving into December, we have the Festival of Trees, December seventh. It's a huge event for us. We have a lot of private holiday parties, so we're very, very busy in December. We've also got a second annual Winter Market, which is like a craft fair on December seventeenth and eighteenth. And then moving into the future, two thousand and twenty-three, Let's Go Fishing Show will be our first event, and that's on the sixth through the eighth. And we also are excited about working with Council Unit Ten on two events in two thousand and twenty-three, the Hall of Fame Banquet, February sixteenth. And then we have the Council High School Prom next year in the building. So we're just very excited. The staff, I appreciate you calling out the staff, they're the hardest-working, most creative team. I'm proud to be their leader, and I think they're doing a great job. And I'm very excited to build upon this current success.
And we've got prom locked in for multiple years now. We did head it back, had to take a year off because of a already-existing contract we had entered into. But it's been, you know, an active endeavor of Jamie, myself, and Dr. Skardich to make sure that this is here all the time. And we've got that locked up to a multi-year contract now. So I think that's, it's also great to have that first Hall of Fame event. So it's big, but it's a great job.
Great asset for the city. Great asset, and it's it's safe and it's free parking. It's safe, compared to some other places.
And I had a student that was going to the prom, I would much rather them stay in town and go to the Gateway Center than to St. Louis like they do.
Everybody else comes here, so why wouldn't we stay here?
Why, but I think it's a, it's a win-win for us. I think our relationship with Unit Ten has improved tenfold over the past ten years. And, you know, we we rely on a good school system and good education to make the community even a better place to live. And then why not partner with them with the the Gateway Center?
One more point I wanted to hit overall was when we hit that thirty-six million dollar number of economic impact, we talked, and then we talk about those direct revenues to the facility and what that looks like. And talk a little bit about hotel motel, but it's the indirect economic impacts. And what Jamie said is what those people who attend events there, whether it's a dance show, whether it's a overnight event where they drives hotel rooms, they're spending money in this community. And they're buying things and contributing to the sales tax despite what some people think. So I would tell you that, you know, that is the big point there is the impacts, the secondary impacts, the indirect impacts that that brings to the rest of the community in this market, which was why we were in this position. And I can tell you that after four years, that's a very significant turnaround when you go from a subsidization level of around six hundred thousand dollars to in the twenties and to potentially close that gap is just, is very amazing, so, yep.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Yes.
So it's typical of a convention center and any other community that they are subsidized. That's, it's pretty typical.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's the norm. I'm not, like Jamie and I said, I'm really not aware of any that run a profit.
That run a profit. So looking back at those numbers, though, two questions. The commission that we're getting from Preferred Catering Program, is that factored into the revenue?
Yes.
Okay, that's factored in. But if you take the two, the catering and Gateway Convention Convention P and L, then it's turned to profit this year if you look at it.
No, it hasn't. What we've done, so we separated this intentionally. The numbers for concessions and the catering is contained within this number, just like it would have been before. We also look at catering, the catering concessions department as a standalone P and L.
Okay. Didn't I know that? I like that, but I didn't know that.
Yep. And so we wanted to clarify the conversation and not then go into like, here's how much this played out. But so this is, this is the direct, and then those numbers are factored into those revenues.
Got it.
Just like, we will talk about the water park here in a second, and you will see those concession revenues baked into their P and L as well.
Okay, okay. Still, it's still really great to see where it's come in such a short time, especially when you factor in COVID.
The recovery has been great, and it's, we're in demand, and it's a good position to be in for sure, so.
Yeah.
And so Jamie, I want to thank you. You've done a great job with the leadership there. You've taken care of what I have always called one of the greatest assets Collinsville has. Because I know that there were some that had said, why don't we sell it to a private investor and let them see if they can do it? And as you can see, you're doing a great job bringing in shows, but we're still at a break-even point. So the only way that it turns profitable is if they start charging astronomical sums or they start laying off and trying to do it with less people. So I think what we're doing here is showing, by the city owning this, we have the ability to, even if they're just breaking even, the city is reaping the rewards from the the indirect revenue coming from the hotels, the restaurants, all the people that are coming to our community for these shows. So even if it breaks even, we win. But I'm thinking the other way around. Think about COVID. If we had had that owned by a private entity, that would have gone under. Could you imagine the impact to the community if we did not have Gateway? The impact to the hotels, to the restaurants, the entire area down there would have been a much different place without Gateway. So that's why I'm glad that we have been able to come out of COVID and turn this in in the manner that you have, because, like we said, even if you break even, we're coming out way ahead with all the other revenue sources that are coming from it on the indirect basis. So you're doing a great job. In fact, I was just there over this weekend. I forgot to mention in my comment, comments, I was there at the wedding for Derek Jackson, our Assistant City Manager. The wedding was beautiful. The reception was amazing, your servers were top-notch. It was such a fun event, and they all just did a great job, and it was such a fun wedding. So congratulations, Derek. I know you're out on on your honeymoon, but congratulations.
I'm sure he's not listening, I'm certain.
What I can say in in ending this conversation, I hope, did you have something else to say?
I was just going to say real quick that part of the success in this business plan was bringing the revenue streams in-house, controlling AV and media and controlling the catering and concessions. And COVID allowed us to get out of that contract that, you know, was increased cost for the catering, and the quality was not good. So you're paying a middleman, and then we were paying a seventeen and a half. It looks like we really took it down to get a thirteen percent commission there. But the reason we did that was to make sure that we could have good caterers come in here, and it was affordable for them without having to pay us. It's a very fair arrangement. I think, you know, that was really the game changer for us, was to have the business plan and the success of this was to control those revenue streams in-house and to make sure that, you know, simply removing that middleman took us to a place where it was really, I think, repressive on business, as a matter of fact, as we've seen it. And so, yeah, so we're in a great place. But the catering for this weekend was done by one of our outside caterers. But, yeah, we would have done just as good a job in the service, so, but, yeah.
So to your point, you had mentioned, you know, the the sales tax revenue that we get. But this is not just about us either. That that amount of business, what that does for all of the businesses and how that helps them and supports them. You know, if you go down, yeah, I mean, it's it's crazy. So this is not all about us, this is what what this place does for everyone in this community.
For all the hotels, all the restaurants.
All the restaurants. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we bring the ketchup. I mean, that's what this is about. This is about, this is, this is the reason the Tourism Bureau came to us and said, we need you to be part of this, because you have the convention center, so you have the hotel rooms.
This was a good report, thank you. Been a while since we've gotten the update. Thank you.
This is how things evolved in a community forty years, forty-plus years ago. Mayor Gene Brown had the dream of building a convention center. Self-standing, self-serving. But unfortunately, that it it was built, it survived. But now it's 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 forty years later, we're saying it's well and and it's worth. And so things just don't happen overnight and start making money and and doing great things. We had great years, but, you know, ideas do sometimes come around to to help us. And I just wanted to put Gene's name in there because he was a man beyond his years and had a great vision, so.
So I'm going to go on to my next item, and I'll ask Kimberly Korn to come up and talk a little bit about parks programming. And then water park season passes, and then we'll talk a little bit about the performance of the water park and how we ended the season.
Mayor Miller, members of the council, I have a couple of programs just to highlight tonight before we get into that. We have our last Parks After Dark this Thursday. We are doing a pumpkin glow and float at Woodland Park. This is a pre-registration program, and I believe we have a few spots left. So if anybody's interested, they are welcome to call and sign up, or they can do so online. Last week, we did a trunk-or-treat at Glidden Park, and we had about four hundred people in attendance. So we were thrilled, have never seen the park that busy. And then we have Bonfires and Brews, which is an adults-only event on November fifth, and that one does require pre-registration as well.
I've been to that bonfire and brews, boy, that is a good time.
Thank you.
That is very nice, I like that.
All right. I don't want to say it pains me to have to do this, but we just feel like we just ended summer, and here we are talking about summer again. Um, Black Friday Sale, we have, um, we're just announcing the 2023 Season Pass prices for the Black Friday Sale. This will be the best prices that you can get your season passes for the Collinsville Aqua Park. It will begin on the Friday after Thanksgiving and, um, these prices will continue through the end of the year. They will go up incrementally, um, until we open for the season. These prices are very similar to what our prices were this year. They, there's only a slight increase in them.
And so I'm gonna, I'll set this up a little bit and then Kimberly can talk and let's do, just like we did with Gateway Center, let's talk a little bit about, since this was one of our assets, I would tell you that we acquired in 2018 and that also we suffered terribly through COVID with at the beginning. And so, you know, we assumed the ownership in 2018 and the management in 2019 from card, if y'all remember. Uh, we did not buy this facility, but it was transferred to the city. So again, no acquisition costs. I know everybody likes to think we bought it from card, but we did not. We, uh, the facility was in terrible shape and I just thought I'd like to go back and share some of those great pictures that we had when we say we had, you know, you can talk all the way from tie strapped, uh, held up fencing for the chemical area to, um, an air conditioner that had to be drained into a five gallon bucket in guest services to this for signage strapped up to Monsey Mountain and even a better yet, the sprinkler system was a really great little, uh, garden hose, uh, tie strap to a sign. So when we look at some of the issues we had, when we look at replacement value, we go through insurance, I think the last estimated value was right around $28 million for replacement value. Um, and so the council and staff put together a plan to re, to invest 1.7 million in improvements and efficiencies to the facility. And I think you've all seen those and see what that looks like. Uh, more importantly, reduced it, reduced our operational costs and brought some sustainability there. Um, and so it kind of gave us another breath of life. And quite frankly, again, I want to let everybody know, without home rule, the city would not have been able to take the parks back without raising property taxes, support the efforts. In fact, the conversation was card drops their operations levy, the city, because it's home rule, takes over the properties and you can use your home rule authority to finance that without a direct cost to the residents. So a little ironic that there's some overlap now. People, I believe you had a cardboard member at your last meeting who was saying, oh, get rid of home rule. Well, we would not have been able to do this without substantially raising property taxes for the city. Um, I think it's always fair to point that out. And again, I believe we had every one of these conversations in a very open, honest, transparent manner and we publicized it six ways from Sunday. And since I'm talking about the item of transparency, I certainly remember working here where we were told as department heads not to discuss agenda items and we want to get out of here under 20 minutes. And that is before any of you were on this council. Uh, the mayor was here, but that was not who was driving that agenda. I will tell you that. Um, now, look at us. We're already sitting here and we haven't even gotten to new business yet because it's all about the discussion of these items. So.
Hell, I take 20 minutes just by myself.
Well, I wasn't gonna say that, but you brought it up. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna kind of talk, bring it back to where we're at today and let Kimberly talk a little bit about what I see as, as a success.
Thank you. Now I want to say we didn't have, we didn't prep this report like Jamie did hers. So ours is a little bit more, um, broad level. We can get into in-depth on this too. So of course, it's business plan focused on serving the residents and getting residents re-engaged with the facility. Um, 2019 was, um, a challenge, but we kicked off the season with the first annual Memorial, um, Memorial Day Weekend Firework Celebration, which was a wonderful way to kick off the summer. Um, we had, we suffered just like everyone else did during the pandemic years. Um, one of the benefits of being outside and in a highly chlorinated facility is that we did have, um, a lot of measures in place and we could, we could still open, but at a reduced level. Um, and then again, those mitigations were in place for a partial year in 2021. Um, there's a breakdown of the revenue versus the expenses and, um, you can see that we were, didn't break even this year, but, um, are subsidized by just under 10%.
Just very good performance, I would say. So, uh, again, those people that patronize the water park also spend money in this community. I think the average attendance, I mean, we looked at paid, paid attendance, I think it was somewhere north of 200. But on most days during the weekend, we were regularly around six to 700, I think, with full occupancy being a thousand, right? Babing load.
Full occupancy at 700 is where we've been keeping it. Um, and then, so we have, we have paid admissions, we have, uh, of course, our season passes that we always allow those in even after we hit capacity with general admission. We also do groups. So during the week, Monday through Thursday, we allow, bless you, um, three groups of up to 50 people. So that's 150 that go in a group reservation, um, which doesn't count towards general attendance. We also host birthday parties during the week and then we have private rentals as well during the weekend, the weekend and after hours.
And how many teenagers did we employ and give summer, summer employment to?
Oh, I remember approving about 187 times she's at one point this summer.
You know, we give back to the community in, in such a way, uh, not only in, in having a beautiful aqua park, but we also give employment to teenagers that, that need a job for the summer. And so it's a win-win for the community. So.
It is. Thank you. And not only are they lifeguards, but they're maintenance workers and they're concession workers and they work in our guest service, uh, department as well. So lots of jobs. And if you're interested, we will be hiring soon.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on. We've got more.
Thank you.
We've got more. I feel like an infomercial. Um, let's talk a little bit about property taxes and our public safety pensions. Taught, heard a lot about this. You heard a lot about that resident comment at your last meeting. Heard a little bit about property tax. So we'll hit it in a couple of spots. Uh, first thing, um, when we talk about the public safety pension, obviously referring to the police and fire pensions, those are two separate pension boards for each. So we have a, a police pension board and a fire pension board. And for those that pay attention, the council regularly makes appointments to those boards. Um, the amount of contribution from the city is provided to the city by the pension board. The city does not set that rate. Uh, the amount that should be contributed is based and determined by an actuarial projection determined by the state and through state statutes. The requirement is that all public safety pensions are funded at 90% by 2040. Uh, when you look at, um, how our funding level is, is we are well within the top 10% of those pension boards within the state. It's 63% and 67% respectively, 63 for police, 67 for fire. Um, and you can look then again at how much we bring in at property taxes. This is absolutely ridiculous that we bring in 3.1 million of which 2.9 million goes to fund the public safety pension funds with 225,000 going to the general fund. So I would say that's really low. Again, wanted to talk a little bit about how that's set up and how that plays out. There were comments about putting extra money to that and that is something that, um, anyone with a finance background will tell you is to not intimit those actuarial projections for the reason, um, and the way they're determined. So, um, any questions on public safety pensions? And if there's not, I'm gonna ask, uh, Community Development Director Taylor to come up and let's talk a little bit about how the occupancy program is doing and how it's done since 2018. And again, I think another, if I can ever get the slide to move, another success story as you see through this.
Yep. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bear. Uh, the, to switch gears a little bit, uh, some council members had, had approached me with some questions regarding our occupancy program. So over the past few years, we compiled all of the, uh, you know, some of the significant data from the occupancy program to kind of give you, uh, an idea of, of where we're at, where we're spending our time doing and what those numbers look like. So, uh, looking here, you see 2018, um, year of inception, uh, you're gonna see that those numbers are pretty low. 350 in this occupancy program, you may recall, is upon change of tenant, upon change of ownership, uh, triggers an occupancy inspection with the city. We conducted an inspection and these numbers are, are what we're looking at here. So, um, not all inspections pass and so we have broken these down to failed first. We had to return for a second inspection. Not uncommon, but you'll see exactly how those numbers play out here. And then also further broken that down to fails your second, we have to go back for a third, fails your third, you have to go back for a fourth. I've broken these down into two categories. We've got owner occupancy and we've got rental. That way you can kind of get an idea of where we're spending our time and, and kind of where those lanes are. So again, 2018, year of inception, we've got some low numbers. Uh, you can see 95% of rental inspections passed on the first go, 11% on the second. And then as you see, the, uh, the numbers start to ramp up as, you know, our policies are straight. We've got full years under our books and we're getting, you know, the, the Realtor, I mean, the landowners and the property owners and the Realtors and everybody knows that the system's in place. So we start getting more of those voluntarily. So you can see that the numbers start to increase, but overall the percentages across the board are fairly similar. You're seeing a.
Just to clarify Travis, the first line is how many, is the percentage that the rentals made up of total? So if you look on the bottom, 95.1%.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
So, yeah, so I know what you were looking at.
Yeah, my apologies. And so then these percentages are percentages of these that required second inspection. So try, okay, so, yep, let me back up. The percentage that you see here reflects a percentage of the rental inspections. So of those totals of the rental inspections, 11% required seconds. So thank you. Sorry for the, the miss, misspeak there. Uh, but you'll see the percentages and when we look at the grand totals for the, for the most part, stay the same. And so you're looking at, it's unfortunately a little bit difficult for me to read. Um, so you're looking at approximately a 17% uh, of our rental inspections required second inspections. And then we're usually able to tackle those in two inspections. Uh, that means we've addressed everything in the first inspection and the property owner has, has addressed those by the second inspection and then it's approved and then it moves on. And those usually are scheduled within 30 days. Uh, so complete the first inspection, next inspection is scheduled in 30 days and so then we're done. And then very few require thirds and then even fewer still, uh, rarity requires a fourth inspection.
80% pass on the first inspection.
Yep. So, and then when you're further breaking this down, so we're looking at owner occupines, these numbers skew a little bit different. We, our, these numbers are a little bit higher for seconds. Um, not uncommon. We've got, you know, our landlords in town understand what we're, what we're checking for. So they change a tenant in a couple of years. They know what we're looking for. The properties are prepped, they're prepared. They're gonna knock these, most of these out in the first inspection. And, um, and, and so for owner occupines, it's a little bit different. And so we've got, um, approximately 44% go to second inspection, but then you do see that steep decline for thirds and fourths. So, uh, most occupancies are, are handled within one to two inspections. Most of, we've done 1,000, 150 units, uh, 20 or 20, 27% of the units were found in violation for the first and required second. So you're looking at 27% of the total number of 4,243 separate inspections and units have been inspected. Um, and when we're doing these, we're prioritizing, prioritizing life safety issues. Most of the, the items that would bring us back for a second inspection, you're thinking smoke detectors, uh, GFCI outlets, ground fault indicating outlets, and, uh, other, uh, major life safety hazards. And so, uh, really goal of the program as, uh, as council members who are here during that inception would, would tell you that, uh, to preserve life safety issues within, within the home and those are the items that, that we see always on our, you know, or commonly on our checklist and that would bring us back. Uh, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the status of the program today and, and what we're looking at moving forward.
Uh, just a few comments. I'm glad to see we're, you know, and really at, at three or four years, we're just still getting the program up and running. Um, what I would like to see that we work on maybe in the next year or so is to try to put some numbers to the amount of time we have in those inspections. And of course, we have the people that, um, comply right away on first inspection. Then we have the people that go on and on and on. We end up in court with them. And I'd like to see how much time the city wastes and, and not waste the dollar it takes, takes to keep going after those people. We end up in court with them because we have just a few of them in town. It's not a great, I think majority of people are complying. But there are some that take it to the limit and I'd like to be able to put a number to that at some point because we, we're all about saving money for the city, but we gotta see where we're spending our money at. So just maybe make that something we talk about later.
Absolutely.
Yep. And, and, uh, on the topic of, you know, putting dollars and cents to our manpower here and what time we're spending doing occupancy inspections, it has been a topic over the last year or so and so much so that we've tried to make changes to our forms to capture time spent during inspection. And so we'll, this will be able to, we'll be able to actually put a dollar amount to make sure, you know, also as a, you know, as a program, we're, we know where the money is going.
We know the dive will be forthcoming. Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's talk a little bit about property taxes. Um, first of all, I think, you know, you heard tonight's discussion that we need to make an equal comparison, right? Um, I think every time we do a budget, we come to the council and you'll see this on the bottom bullet point is we compare our rates to the, our other municipalities. And, uh, when we do that, we also make the comment to say that we have one, we have one levy. We have a municipal levy, period. Others have multiple and I think O'Fallon was referenced. So coincidentally, also have O'Fallon up here for reference because they have a City of O'Fallon municipal tax, but then guess what? You also pay library property taxes, City of O'Fallon, which brings the total amount you pay to the city up to 8.8358. We have one line item there. Um, and also I think it's important that everybody understands that our rate setting EAV will change considerably for '23 because all of the TIF one properties come fully under the tax rule. So that will mean the same amount of money with less taxes from homeowners. Um, home rule does and has allowed Collinsville to maintain low property taxes. Is that true for every home rule community in the state of Illinois? No, I would tell you those color communities in Chicago and other ones, everyone uses it. Home rule allows you the diversity for revenues. And since we're talking about that, let's talk about what we would do if we lost home rule and then decided to put a 1% general sales tax, increase that. So home rule sales tax is not applicable to groceries and a lot of those items, uh, entitled vehicles. So you don't have a lot of those people who are at risk having to pay that home rule sales tax on those items that are necessary. You don't have those exemptions with the general sales tax. So if you put another 1% in there, it would generate, um, an equivalent amount of money to the city, but it would cost those who could least afford it the most because they wouldn't have, some of those reductions or, um, exemptions are included within the sales tax. Um, when we go and look at the next slide and I just wanted to make sure that we all look at this and you can pull this off Madison County's website. Here's Collinsville again, 72930. This is tech, tech levy year 21, collected 22. We just talked about what O'Fallon is. Well, let's, let's look at Troy because we've talked about Troy. 603 municipal levy with Troy fire for .3126. So that gives you 9156. We, you pay for your fire levy within that whole $3.1 million. That's your whole levy there. That .7293. Oh, and let's take a look at Godfrey. That's the other one everybody likes to bring up. 8.337 for fire, 1263 for municipal, total of 96. That's your equivalent number. This is, there's nothing else in here that comes to the city, period. See Mississippi Valley Library, City of O'Fallon Library, Sid, Troy Fire. Uh, you look, Godfrey Fire. So those are those. There can be others that are made, but, um, to sum it up, I think it's important that we're all talking the same language here and we look at what we actually pay, um, within those property taxes. Any, any questions or comments there? So just to address a couple of items really quickly that have come up is, um, what happens if we lose home rule? And I can tell you that I'm not gonna tell you what, what we get cut, but, you know, when we added home rule, the city was able to add nine employees in the police department, five employees in the fire department, six employees in the street department and three employees in administration for a total of 23 employees coming out of the general fund. I think it's reasonable to expect that those would be where cuts start because what would happen if we were to lose home rule would see a combination of an increase in property tax coupled with probably a 20 to 25% reduction in staffing, period. So, yeah, the other communities have taken different approaches as well. I know one sent out layoff notices that if they lose home rule, that here's what each department will lose. And I know another community chose to do what we did and not stoke the, the fear fire. But yes, the, the, this is real. And again, you can only look at what the city was able to do with home rule and not talk about, oh, what are we gonna lose if we lose home rule? What were we able to do with home rule? One of those things that we were really able to do well with home rule also is clean up Collinsville Crossing. Man, wouldn't y'all like to have what it was before that with the trailer park and the, I mean, I've heard stories. I'm gonna tell you what, that should be a movie made about what it was like. But I guess we should still have that existing area and we should not have done anything with it. Uh, so let's talk also about what was referenced earlier about that sensationalistic article about raising the taxes in Collinsville Crossing. That was done in 2012 and, and I. That was done in two thousand and twelve, and, and I think a couple of you remember why that was done, because when that business district was put together, leadership at that time forgot to assess Walmart, the business district tax. And Home Depot has only assessed half of what they were supposed to be paying. How in the world do you think you're gonna have financial solvency for a business district that the revenues are used to pay the debt when the gorillas are not fully in there? So what happened in two thousand and twelve, well, they were brought up to the same standard as the rest in there. And by the way, neither one of those corporations complained one time, and now we're on track to meet the responsibilities of that debt payment. So, that's a little bit of the facts that we talk about. But again, I'm pretty sure they would, they would absolutely prefer Gateway Center to go out of business, that we don't have, that card was still there, and, you know, we still had Collinsville Crossing as it was before. Yeah, it's a little frustrating to be dealing with this when we're all focused on moving forward, moving this community forward in a business model. You know, I mean, look at those property taxes that come to this city, and I don't know how it gets any better than that. But I have a feeling you're gonna probably see it get better than that in this next budget coming up. You know, all we use that for is to make sure that we meet the responsible needs of our pensions. And with that, I did overlook one little thing here, we do have Yard of the Year coming up. So, just make sure that there's voting, it ends on October thirty-first, the winner will be announced at C three awards, right? Isn't that the Yard of the Year goes, no? When are we doing? Gotcha. And with that, unless you have any questions of me or staff, I will turn it over to the next item on the agenda finally.
Questions of Mr. Bear. Next item.
Next is the consent agenda. Item one, motion to approve payment of bills for period ending October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of one million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. Item two, motion to approve payroll for period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of seven hundred, ninety-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Item three, motion to approve minutes of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two council meeting. Item four, ordinance accepting an Illinois Workers Compensation Commission settlement contract, lump sum petition and order for Dale Cress. Item five, resolution reappointing a member of the community appearance born to Susan Heligie.
Prior to a motion, is there any item in the consent agenda L one through five that council would wish to call or question? Being none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items L one through five.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Stamen.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Green. Roll call please.
Jerome.
Yes.
Houseman.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Stamen.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Next is new business. Item one, ordinance to authorize a change order in the amount of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty cents to the contract with Reuters American Maintenance DBA, Reuters Asphalt, for the twenty twenty-two mill and overlay program, project M O two three dash three one zero, bringing the total contract value to three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
City engineer, Mr. Troy Turner, will give the overview here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just to kinda give you an overview, the project was originally awarded in the amount of three hundred and four thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents. And then we brought change order back to the council under ordinance twenty-two sixty, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and seventy-three cents. This will be the final change order to deal with extra mill and overlay that was needed at the Gateway Convention Center, and also improvements that were, or things that were needed to be done at West Clay Street that wasn't known until the milling was started. Staff originally, I'm sorry, the last one, the last change order, I'm sorry, was about fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty cents, bringing the total contract to three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents. When we originally budgeted, we budgeted for four hundred thousand dollars. We were expecting the project to come in three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We had a contingency in that amount, because we typically hit subsurface items that we're not expecting. And then we put an extra, we lowered it down to three fifty, mostly because we had no idea what asphalt prices were gonna come in after the asphalt index had increased so much. And so, most of this-
That's your last slide, I put all your pictures there.
Ah, moved it, okay. And so you can see some pictures of the after effects of this. We did some extra work on Clay Street, I don't know if anyone, should have probably put some pictures.
Should have done Clay's, this is Gateway.
Yeah, I should have done a before picture.
Before, after.
There it is. But anyways, though, that's kind of a summary of it. That finalized all, all the contract, that finalizes all the contract quantities and evens out, ends, ends the contract. Are there any questions?
Questions of Mr. Turner. Being none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Houseman.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Jerome, roll call please.
Jerome.
Yes.
Houseman.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Stamen.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Item two, ordinance amending the Illinois Municipal Code, Chapter twelve point two, related to the construction of utilities and the rights away.
Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council again. So, with everything going on, and all the street scape's coming up, we worked with community development, just kinda looking at our rules on what was allowed for utility poles, and what wasn't allowed. And trying to reduce the amount of guy wires that are required. Typically, wooden poles require a lot of guy wires, a lot of extra right of way, and then after time, they start to look pretty bad before they get replaced. Metal poles and some of the other poles that are out there, they don't, they have a footing and a foundation on them, and you have minimal to no guy wire. So part of our, our outlook was, when we start doing work and these utilities are relocating their power poles, we try to, we'd like to have it so it's got the least impact on our right of way. So if we can move them away from wooden poles, in the part that's most impactful to our right of way, that's the best for the city and the residents. So, item, locations where wooden poles would still be allowed are outside of commercial corridors, and when they're at least fifty feet away from a residential structure. So trying to push it so it's not right in the public view shed, or if it is, it's more so against trees, and you won't even be able to see them, because they blend in with the trees. So, that's kind of an overview of this, and the goal is to try to camouflage the poles, so have like materials, like color, as the area they're in, so they kinda blend in with the street lights, all the other poles that are in the area, or they blend in with the trees. Here's some examples of some composite, some metal poles that are out there. They come in a variety of colors and styles, so if we're gonna have, if we're gonna have aerial power, at least try to make it so it's least impactful and best looking for the community.
Is that fairly consistent with most other communities you're doing?
So there's not a lot of other communities in our area that have restrictions on that. We're trying to get ahead of it, especially as we go do work on St. Louis Road. If we have to keep power, power lines aerial, we'd like to try to make them blend into the area and be at least better looking, and have less guy wires for impacts on pedestrians and cyclists.
I noticed that a lot of the new higher utility poles on Vandelia, when they redid the highway there, the roadway, they put the permanent style fiberglass or aluminum
Yeah.
in there, and it's must, much better to look at, and a lot less dangerous. I think it's a, it's a great move.
And have you had conversations with Ameren or any other power company about what their thoughts are on this?
We have not gone to them to talk about it. Anything that's new that's out there, they're required to go underground, based on our ordinances, so this is just areas where they're having to move and relocate poles.
Okay, well, I, I guess I'm, I'm just concerned that if we make this a regulation, and Ameren says we don't have the resources to do that, will that in some way negatively impact the changing of even the wooden poles?
We still got wooden poles right now that they've left up, because they've, they've decided to move poles right next to each other.
But my concern is, is that they may delay updating and doing things like that, because they're saying, we don't, we don't want to change to metal.
I mean, it's a possibility. Other municipalities have required them to go to composite, and since they require them, and it's not an ordinance, they've, the municipalities had to pay the fee. This is to help keep us from having to pay the fee along corridors. And it's not all of them, it's just where they're close to houses, and where they're close to businesses, we're trying to keep them from, from using wooden poles. In the areas, like going up through the hillsides and not close to houses, not in business areas, they can continue using those wooden poles when they relocate.
Okay, a, and I understand, and I love the idea, I, I just have a concern that, that it's-
Traditionally, and, you know, the, the municipalities have done that, have not gotten issues back from the utilities that this is a concern. I would tell you that this is the emerging standard practice of prog- progressive communities. I don't mean that negatively, to mean progressive politically, but ones moving forward. And like Troy said, this is only for the replacement, and our major public right of ways in areas that are generally significant
Commercial nodes, or commotion-
Commercial areas, that, you know, we've had various conversations about, you know, how this reduces some of the visual clutter, makes it look a lot better. But, yeah, traditionally, there hasn't been a lot of negative feedback from the utilities. I think it's important to know that they dragged their feet on almost doing everything, and like Troy said, you can drive around, and I tell you, I know there's, I think there's forty-plus poles that-
There's over a hundred poles.
Over a hundred poles that have nothing on them that we've asked to be removed over the last four years that are still out there. So, you know, these are mainly on construction projects, and we're doing work to kinda clean it up and make it more efficient to do future work as well.
And the goal of this was areas like Collin, or like Collinsville Crossing area, there's not a lot of poles over there, but that area of one fifty-seven, where it's a busy area. And then areas like St. Louis Road, and then our uptown area, and then along one fifty-nine, so it's not in all the neighborhoods. Most of the neighborhoods, they can put the poles in where they're at least fifty feet from the houses, or the structures. It's, it's mostly gonna hit in the commercial areas, and then when you've got spots where there's a lot of houses close by.
And Mitch, you said it's, are you aware of any other cities who've done this ordinance?
Um, not in the immediate metro east, no. But in the state of Illinois, it's very, in, in the more metro areas, yes.
I just have a concern that, that if we create these, this rule, Ameren may delay replacing poles because of the added cost associated with it, and, and it could be a, something that's simply in my mindset of it.
They can't just delay. I mean, there are damages if we go through this process and require this.
Yeah, we have a franchise agreement, and they have a timeframe that's set up. We, we can give, they can have up to three years for budgeting and stuff. So if we, if we give them a project right now, they've missed this budgeting cycle, so they go into next budgeting cycle and they put it in, and then they have to design it and construct it within eighteen months after that budget cycle started.
Is there anything in the franchise agreement that could alter this in any way or in some way impede?
It didn't have anything in there about that, it was just they had to relocate to meet the city's plans for construction projects.
Okay, but this is a construction, this is replacement, right?
Right, and so typically, when they do their replacements, it's involved with our construction project we have, or poles that are failing. So they're not gonna let, they're not gonna take on that liability of a failing pole.
All right. I have concerns, but-
Okay. Anyone else?
Saving trees, I guess.
Yes, that's true, that is a good point.
Entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Stamen.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Green, roll call.
Jerome.
Yes.
Houseman.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Stamen.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Item three, resolution in support of application for funding through the Metro East Park and Recreation District for year twenty-three, Community Planning Grant Program for the City of Collinsville Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan.
Mr. Turner.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council again. So we are going to be applying for forty percent of the total project, up to forty thousand dollars from MEPRD for a bicycle and pedestrian plan. So the goal of this is to have it combined into with our part, particular we have in our Parks and Rec plan, and just kinda combine them together, get a full plan for how we bike and walk throughout the city. This also allows, so this will give us a plan so that we can, we can figure out where our priorities are through public input, public involvement, seeing what the community actually wear, where they wanna travel, where they wanna travel from, so that way we can incorporate it in a very transparent plan. And then, this will allow us better funding opportunities. A lot of the funding opportunities that are out there, they require a bike ped plan prior to getting any funding opportu, funding. And then the ones that are out there, if you have a bike ped plan, it puts you up higher, in a higher bracket for scoring, so. The other part of this project will be paid for with the ACT Community Action Grant Program. By ACT, that's up to a hundred thousand dollars. So this whole project, our whole planning document will come out to zero cost for the city. Are there any questions?
Questions?
How does this relate to the previous one that we had a couple of years back?
So the previous one was an ADA transition plan, so it went out and looked at all the ADA defects that were out there. Areas that were missing sidewalks. What this does is, they take a general, so they take all the data that's in the ADA transition plan as well, and they incorporate that along with where our major hubs are, and where residents want to go, to try to develop a bicycle and trail, bicycle and pedestrian network to reach all those nodes and reach the residents.
So you're talking-
This is more, so let me clarify, you have your city, you have your public works, your city engineer up here talking about, this is really a culmination of our sidewalk planning efforts for the CIP, as well as what you saw come out of the master plan for Parks and Rec, which was more connection, more trails, more bike ability, more walkability, sidewalks. So this puts all that together, and then will give us a game plan for how we implement bikes, trails, walkways, where, everything within the city, completely different.
Okay, this is coming at us essentially free, when all is said and done.
Yeah.
Another irresponsible move by city government, right?
And, and you will see this compounded when we do a new design manual for engineering standards, where it's going to impose things that would follow this plan.
And I know I've read articles of other cities that are doing this exact same thing, so that we can try and inter, even interconnect with other cities.
Right, and, and it helps out with extending the trail for Madison County, and making more options for our residents and for transit travelers.
And that's part of what I've read the article on, was saying that very thing, was how to make it a bike path that's not just within the city, that's, that's interconnected using existing trails that are already there.
Tremendous economic development opportunity that's untapped. Take a look at what's happened along Grants Trail, Kirkwood, the transition that those areas have made in the last twenty years, from being really against trails to the fact that you market your house to the trail, and businesses crop up, and people get on there and do craft brewery rides. We are set up to do those types of things, and especially with a lot of that interconnectivity, when you look at the Goshen Trail, and those, the trailhead that'll go in up on the north side of town. So, so exciting, brings it all together, and, you know, the efforts that that MCT are making by putting the bike, Schoolhouse Trail underneath one fifty-seven is really gonna open that up, because it's, one fifty-seven's really acted as a barrier to those biking, just given that unsafe crossing environment. So hopefully, these efforts coupled with that'll really put us in a position to leverage some development opportunities as well along the trail system.
Yeah, and I was thinking that that's what Edward Smogline Carbon Troy, that's what they had just done to interconnect a lot of that.
And, and we will be implementing some of these ideas when we are going through our, our road projects. So when we're doing our, our mill and overlay, we will look at these to try to, if we need to move the road a little bit, we can move the road a little bit to incorporate the trails in the future.
Perfect, very nice.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call please. Or, a, a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Green.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Houseman, roll call please.
Jerome.
Yes.
Houseman.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Stamen.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Item four, resolution in support of application for funding through the Agency for Community Transit, Community Action Grants Program for the City of Collinsville Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan.
Mr. Turner. This is basically the same thing, but only another organization.
Same thing, this is through ACT's Community Action Grant. They will pay up to a hundred thousand dollars towards the, the creating of a bicycle ped plan. And if you wanna take money for doing bicycle or pedestrian accommodations in a right of way, or anywhere else for a municipality, you have to have- you have to have a bike ped plan to get their hundred thousand dollars. So, we'll use this for our first phase of it, and then next year we can apply for more.
Any other questions, comments on this?
Yes, I know, free money.
Free money.
Free money.
Free.
Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Jerome?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Green.
Jerome?
Roll call.
Houseman?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Stamen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is the adjournment.
Entertain a motion for, Jerome?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Houseman.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Jerome, roll call please.
Jerome?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Stamen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Regular city council meeting of the City of Collinsville, Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.